Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the November 30th, 2020, meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. I'm Jeff Benton, President of the Board. To my right is our Vice President Gary Merrill, to my left, and our County Administrator Mike Fromer. And to my left is our fellow Commissioner Barbara Lewis. And our clerk today is Jennifer Warraven. She's going to run the meeting very efficiently and quickly, right Jennifer?
Sure.
All right.
Resolution number 20-1061, in the matter of approving the electronic record of proceedings from regular meeting held November 23rd, 2020.
So move.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1061. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1062, in the matter of approving purchase orders and now certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR 1125 and memo transfers in batch number MT APR 1125.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1062. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1063, in the matter of granting annexation petition from agent for the petitioner, Michael R. Shade, attorney at law, requesting annexation of 32.475 acres of land in Delaware Township to the City of Delaware.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1063. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1064, in the matter of approving a transfer of funds for the Delaware County Board of Developmental Disabilities.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Welcome Jared.
Good morning Commissioners, Jared Zorillo with Delaware County.
You can take your mask off, please. Yeah, it really makes it easier to hear, and we're streaming, so.
Absolutely, sorry about that.
Thank you Jared. Oh, no problem, thank you.
Good morning. Jared Zorillo with Delaware County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and we are asking to transfer 1.4 million to our Medicaid Reserve Fund from our general account.
This is something you do every year?
Yes, we do it annually.
And this to maintain an adequate balance in the reserve?
Yes.
As required. Okay, vote please.
Vote on motion 20-1064. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks Jared.
Thank you.
Resolution number 20-1065, in the matter of authorizing the purchase of telecommunications equipment and services, archiving interface server and channel addition.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning Commissioners, Patrick Brantman, 9-1 Director. What we have before you this morning is actually a project we're going to do next year. Our friends at Motorola provided an incentive to the county of over $40,000 if we had signed on this contract prior to the end of the year. One is an additional channel add-on to our 800 system. That'll give additional talk paths for our first responders out there, and they don't get busies. So it's obviously more people talking, the option of getting a busy, and that'll take away that. The other part is a part for our recording system that we're putting in, to be able to record the audio that we need to maintain and keep. By executing it now, like I said, it'll save us just over 40,000.
Okay. Mike, you were working on this to include this in the budget for next year?
It is in the 9-1-1's budget for 2021, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, and that was something you were planning on including and no issues?
The delivery and the execution of the delivery will happen next year. We'll just be doing the requisition and appropriating the money this year.
Correct.
Okay.
So the requisition will be done this year. No funds out of the general fund will be done this year.
Right, I remember you saying that.
It'll be all out of levy funds next year.
Could this be eligible for Cares funding at all? Guessing?
Um, I would have to talk to them. I'm not sure on that.
Okay. All right. Well, if you could check on that, just let me know.
I'll talk to Mr. Mike and Ms. Karen.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Vote please.
Vote on motion 20-1065. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thank you.
Resolution number 20-1066, in the matter of approving a transfer of appropriation for land and buildings.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, John Melvin, Director of Facilities. This transfer is just strictly out of precaution as we add into the last month of the year. Our materials and supplies are getting pretty close on appropriations, so I just want to transfer some funds from our salary over to materials and supplies, in case we have a pump failure or something that we would have to fix between now and the end of the year.
Okay, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1066. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1067, in the matter of declaring personal property obsolete, unfit, or not needed for public use, and the intent of selling such property via internet auction or disposal of property of no value.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
A list of vehicles that we've pulled out of service throughout the summer. We've replaced most of these, so ready to put these out for auction on gov deals. Just as a side note, the Sheriff's Office just received within the last month their 15 cruisers, have just started to turn those in, so as we get those switched out, we'll have another list coming up here pretty quick too as well.
So these are not, where are these vehicles coming from?
Some of them actually came from the Sheriff's Office, the Impalas and stuff, and some from maintenance. We were using Crown Vic, this Savannah van, the trailers have actually haven't been used in some time. So it, like one from juvenile court, just a mix.
Are we replacing them with lease?
Most of these have been replaced with a lease vehicle, yes. And even the sheriffs, they got some lease vehicles for their detective's office.
Okay.
It's a minor thing, but sometimes those are things they get by. We do take the decals off once they're because you wouldn't want those being resold and still on the cars.
Yes, and that's some of the delay when they get turned over. Why they set up the service center for a little time is to get them stripped out, get all the equipment, get the decals removed. Or sometimes if the vehicle's really bad, we just paint them over. So instead of going through the labor to remove them, the vehicle's so bad, we're only going to get a couple hundred dollars out, we'll just spray paint them. So you can't see them in identical.
I can imagine what those look like.
You know, some of these old trucks and stuff, that it's really hard to get these decals been off for, you know, 15 years to get them to come off without ruining the paint. And so, just paint them blue is sometimes the easier and quickest and cheapest way to handle that.
All right, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1067. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye. Thanks Jared.
John, John, sorry. Just one quick question about the historic courthouse in move-in times.
Yes, they have completed, we got a little hang-up with the elevator and the state inspection. We're getting that addressed. Office City has started, will start installing furniture this week. They anticipate three weeks for furniture installation, which puts us to the week leading up to Christmas. So I'm going to get with Mike, now he's back, and everybody kind of worked through the logistics of the actual move. We're getting really close finally.
So you say the week after Christmas?
Or the week leading up to, that's what we need to get.
Leading up to or after, okay.
Start packing.
Well, now you need to get you boxes for them to start packing.
Start thinking about.
Yeah, that's right.
Thinking about.
Just to be sure, it's Christmas of 2020?
Yes.
My goal is still before 21.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
We have the first silver.
Yeah, Almond has really been, that's a movie. It's really got a lot of punch, little, a lot of paint items that, you know, go through the general contractor.
Boy, I tell you, you're going to be awfully glad when.
This project has been a challenge, yes.
Yes. It looks, it's beautiful though.
But it has turned out wonderful.
Yes.
I have a voice scout that I'm going to give a tour to on Friday. That can get in there, can't it?
Yes. Yep.
Thanks John.
Thank you, John.
Resolution number 20-1068, in the matter of approving GMP Amendment Number 1 to the agreement with Peterson Construction Company for CMAR services for the Allen Creek Water Reclamation Facility Clarifier Upgrade Project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Morning Commissioners, Eric McPeak, Deputy Director of Operations with the Regional Sewer District. This is to approve, this is an amendment to approve the guaranteed maximum pricing for the construction project at Allen Creek. That includes clarifier upgrades, splitter box upgrades, things that are majorly needed. Through the GMP process, we landed on 4.29 million. That includes a $204,000 approximately contingency, unforeseen circumstances build into that. And the original budget was around 4 million, so we're right on budget for this project. So ask for your approval and can answer any questions.
What, how's the progress coming to date and when do you expect it to be completed?
Right now, the expectation is for it to be completed in August. And I was told this morning, the clarifier mechanisms have started to show up about 10 days early, which is great for things like this, being shipped to the site. Concrete repairs are done, and they have mobilized a giant crane, and when equipment like that shows up, they're ready to work. So, so far, we're really excited about the progress. To date, there, you know, as long as they can actually get some work done, we might even be ahead of schedule. So, but we'll wait till the winter. The winter will decide a lot of that with the weather.
Okay.
Thank you.
Vote?
Vote on motion 20-1068. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1069, in the matter of approving an agreement with Peterson Construction Company for progressive design build services for the Olentange Environmental Control Center Headworks and Aeration Upgrades Project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is approving the progressive design build agreement that Peterson was selected in session in August, I believe, towards the end of August. We've been working really diligently to get the contract finalized, and we're there now, so this is an approval of that. And we'll be, you guys already know all this, but we'll be working with them to, you know, determine the best way to upgrade the headworks and the aeration system. So we're asking for approval of this, and can answer any questions as well.
What's the timeline on this one then?
I'm sorry, what?
Timeline on this project?
Okay, so yeah, the, we'll talk about this more tomorrow, because I don't want to give it all away in the budget hearing. But I believe that it is one year for design, and then possibly two to three years for the bill, depending on how soon, depending on what we do, we may start construction, some of the construction sooner to help with the schedule. But it's probably all in all, a two to four-year process.
Okay. I knew it was a major project.
It is, it is a large project, yeah.
Okay. All right, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1069. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1070, in the matter of purchasing HVAC services for the Olentange Environmental Control Center, central maintenance facility, Allen Creek Water Reclamation Facility, Lower Scioto Water Reclamation Facility, and North Star Wastewater Treatment Plant.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
This is for HVAC services, particularly on freon units that require state licensure to work on and backflow preventers.
Okay, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1070. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1071, in the matter of approving preliminary engineering agreement with CSX Transportation Incorporated for a railroad grade separation on Orange Road.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. This resolution involves a, an agreement with CSX Transportation to basically review our engineering plans for the home, excuse me, not the home road, the Orange Road grade separation that we are currently developing. As with all railroad crossing improvements, the railroad, we have to reimburse them for their expenses associated with reviewing our plans. So this agreement calls out the amount, maximum amount of that, and the, excuse me, the estimated amount, and then the provisions for the agreement.
Okay. Got to ask, what, I know this is a major project, what timeline would you guess to make at this point?
I think realistically, we're probably six years out from construction on this project, best case. This will be an extremely difficult project because it will be an underpass, as it currently stands, going by, or judging by the speed at which Columbus developed the LaZelle Road underpass, which will look very, very similar. That was about six to seven years from the initial development through the actual construction, so.
Are they able to still use the tracks? Can you do an underpass? Do you have, is there porpoise supports, or does this have to be taken out of service?
Yeah, all those details will have to be worked out. It's very likely, though, that there will need to be a temporary railroad, or temporary rail built to allow construction during the, during construction of the bridge. So those, that's what makes it very complicated versus an overpass where the road goes over the railroad. That's a little more straightforward, still difficult, but more straightforward, so.
Yeah, I don't know if you remember when in Hilliard, on Hilliard Cemetery Road, they built the underpass under that railroad. There was actually, the road was detoured to the north while they dug the tunnel. Is it going to be that sort of project, where the road is detoured and they dig the tunnel?
Yeah, we're looking at that. The issues we have is we have a relatively constrained area with a water tower to the south, subdivision to the north. The good thing is, we are, we will have the home road grade separation in place. That's our schedule before this project goes. And then, of course, to the south, you have Polaris Parkway. So you have reasonably good alternatives if we do have to close Orange Road. We understand that'll be painful, but we're still looking at whether an at-grade temporary road is still feasible. It's just that we're pretty pinned in there with.
Yeah, right. It is tight there, yeah. Okay.
So you think that home road, that one would be done before this one gets done?
Yes.
I hope, because of the timeframe?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1071. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1072, in the matter of approving a ditch maintenance petition and the ditch maintenance assessment for the Cove at Evans Farm.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
This is our standard drainage maintenance petition to place the storm sewer system for this project on the county's maintenance program, and we're recommending approval.
Okay, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1072. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1073, in the matter of approving the plats of subdivision for Scioto Reserve Extension, Pyatt Preserve Section 2, and the enclave at Abbey Knoll.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
These are, these plats have been approved by regional planning and all the required county agencies. We have 14 lots in the Scioto Reserve Extension, that's on the north side of Home Road, 33 lots in Pyatt Preserve, off of Pyatt Road, just north of Cheshire Road, and Enclave at Abbey Knoll is 26 lots, and that's at South Old State and Abbey Knoll.
Okay, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1073. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks Rob.
Resolution number 20-1074, in the matter of approving the agreement between the Delaware County Board of Commissioners, the Delaware County Prosecuting Attorney, and Matrix Point Software LLC for a new case management system.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning Commissioners, Melissa Shiffle, Delaware County Prosecutor. Hope you all had a nice Thanksgiving. I believe this is the final step in securing our case management system that we brought before you last year during our budget hearing. And we have had Eric review the contract, Chris Betts has reviewed the contract, Matrix has reviewed the contract, and all parties have signed it, so we're just waiting for your final blessing.
I've been along all your review in the contract.
Oh, we did, yeah. It took some time, not from Eric, but yes. We're very excited for this, and thank you again for considering it last year during our budget hearing. If anything, COVID-19 has shown us what we can do with teleworking, and having this case management system would have saved a lot of time and effort in the spring, but understandably, we're here now, and we're excited to move forward.
What timeline would you have on this installation then?
As soon as we have the resolution, we would contact Matrix to see what their timeline is. We did work with Steve a little bit before Louis, and he asked that we wait until after the election before any installation would take place. Honestly, with everything going on, and I don't know how many people from Matrix would need to be on-site, it's probably realistically not going to be installed much before January. It is a progressive installation too, so they would be, our request is they would work with our Civil Division first to get that, to get them up and running, because they're the ones that need it the most. And then progressively work with our Criminal Division and tow the Juvenile Division at the same time. I would expect it to be fully functioning, meaning it's ready for everybody to use. Getting them up to speed on how to use it is a different story. It would take six months.
That is my question too, about getting everybody up to speed, the training that.
That's a huge component of it.
Okay.
From my past experience in working with this product, a year is a good timeline for everyone to feel comfortable with it. But it is, you know, this company is great at working with you and continue to do training. They used to have like a train-the-trainer model, so we would have super-users within the office that could do, once they're trained, Matrix can train others, but then the super-users really are the ones that answer the day-to-day questions and help people out. But it is pretty intuitive. I mean, it was built for prosecutors, so it's not like, you know, learning how to turn on a computer and use the word for the very first time. It is very intuitive for prosecutors' offices.
Question, are there applications for this for the public defender's office as well, or not?
Not, I don't believe there are for Matrix. I'm sure there are other case management systems, like we considered, that were not prosecutor-based, but there, I believe they would need to be much different because we get all of the evidence, and we are in charge of giving all of the evidence, whereas a public defender's office would be a receptacle of the evidence, not the ones contacting the other law enforcement agencies to get it. We have to prepare a grand jury, the indictments, and the plea papers that come with, you know, the charges once they plea, any sentencing entries, documents that we are responsible for preparing, that they wouldn't be responsible for preparing. So that was a very long-winded answer. Yes, I think there are case management softwares out there for the public defender's office, but I don't believe Matrix has a model for them.
I actually spoke to the owner, and they have not developed one yet. It's something that they plan on doing in the future, but they have not. My understanding is that that's a less complex system they can use for particular, you know, for their work, so.
Is this amount within what we budgeted?
Yes.
Is this something we could share with other jurisdictions, as they look at case management software, you know, like City of Delaware and, you know, other organizations?
As long as there's a prosecutor con, you know, part to it, yes, we could share it with the city prosecutor's office and have them, you know, use it for the municipal filings down there. That absolutely could happen. I'd like to see it up and running in my office.
Oh, I understand. I'm not suggesting we make that a priority, I'm just wondering down the road whether.
And we did, we did, in that cost, in that cost is built in extra licenses, including one for Eric, because it's my understanding he can utilize it as well. And we will be able to put the necessary buffers for attorney-client privilege as needed to. But yes, we definitely can. But the nice thing about Matrix too is that all of law enforcement will be able to use it as soon as we get it up and running, and they've been trained. They can send their, they'll be able to send their evidence and their reports digitally, as opposed to bringing us discs, or thumb drives, or printing off gobs and gobs of paper.
Big step forward. I know you've been wanting this for some time, and glad to see it come to fruition.
Thank you very much. We're excited, and I think I'll see you tomorrow for our budget hearing.
That's right, that's right.
All right, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1074. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution number 20-1075, in the matter of approving the Ohio Department of Health Contract Unit Tuberculosis Funding Agreement between the Ohio Department of Health and the Delaware County Board of Commissioners.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning Commissioners, Mike Fromer, County Administrator. This is our yearly contract, which is required for us to cover the cost of treatment in conjunction with the Health District, so.
Okay, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1075. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1076, in the matter of approving a renewal of the agreement by and between the Delaware County Commissioners and the City of Delaware for indigent defense services for municipal code violations.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning Commissioners, this resolution is to approve an agreement that we've had with the city in the past, where if we provide outside counsel, representation for indigent defense services, that the city would reimburse us. So this contract is unchanged from the past. Maybe down the road, the Public Defender's Commission would look at this, and maybe there'd be something that would be tweaked to it, but.
This is one-year extension?
Correct.
Okay. So that gives us time to get the public defender in place and operating its own. Okay. Vote?
Vote on motion 20-1076. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number 20-1077, in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to approve and execute zoning applications and other documents in support of the redevelopment and improvement of the property located at 50 Channing Street.
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
Good morning Commissioners, Mike Fromer, County Administrator. This is, as we proceed with disposal of that property, to allow me to sign off on different applications and so forth, similar to what we did with the fairgrounds previously, when they submitted zoning application.
Okay, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1077. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye. Okay, thanks Mike.
Okay, under reports, just wanted to bring up in session that this Thursday is our deadline for, our small business grant program is this week, the deadline. I think that, you know, seeing a lot of mixed reviews about how shopping was, I know there was a lot of buy local campaigns over the weekend as we kicked off the shopping season, so would encourage any small businesses that have been impacted this year to submit an application for the program, so.
Do you have a tally on how many we've received so far?
From last, from last what I've heard from Economic Development, when they get an application, they got to evaluate it and make sure that it's proper and everything, but I think we're about 90 applications, so.
Okay. That's it? That's it Mike then? Okay. Mr. Lewis?
I actually don't have anything.
All right. Commissioner Merrill?
I have a couple things. Our budget meetings start afternoon, and.
Yeah, rest of the week.
We are down substantially sales tax revenue over what we budgeted last year, and I hope everyone comes to this process with that understanding, because we have still questions about next year. So we've got to be, in protecting the taxpayers' interest, we have to be conservative, and I just felt that speech needed to be stated, so, and I believe my fellow commissioners agree with it, it's, we're talking about really huge drop-off in budgeted sales tax revenue, and not the revised figure, but the original budget estimate. Couple other things, just congratulations to Bob Lamb and Economic Development regarding Memorial County, working on agreement with them, to an intergovernmental agreement. I think that would be good and be helpful to one of our neighboring counties, and I think it'd be beneficial to all. The pre-hospital care board, I commend and congratulate the new CAD system that 9-1-1 will put in place by August. We should be able to, be able to identify the closest vehicle, which could and will at some point save a life, because somebody could be coming up wherever side the road, and they're closer than one of our lay-in positions, and they could get to an area before. So that's good news, and Patrick indicated he thought that would be available by August.
Oh, good.
So that's great. And also the protocols, getting protocols throughout the county, and we're all working off the same playbook, if that's how, as a layman, I'm going to frame it, can only be beneficial. We're doing it the same way, it makes it easier to communicate, and to make sure we get the best result possible. So congratulations to the hospital board for the action in both of those areas. I know Mike is a member of that, and as a number of people are, and I shouldn't start naming them now, I feel badly about going to name anyone else. But with that, I hope everyone had a very happy Thanksgiving. I do think there are groups out there, Thanksgiving this year, attacking Thanksgiving. It's a colonial holiday, and we have to be resistant to that effort. And there are groups out there who have bad intentions, and. and they have every goal to change this country. And Thanksgiving is the first step and Christmas will be the next as we approach Christmas. And it's a time for families to get together and families should get together on Christmas. And they should be going to church if they choose to. And those who are opposed to that, shame on them. And I hope we all stand up for what this country's been based on. So with that editorial comment, I'm done.
All right, I certainly agree with that, Commissioner Merrill.
Pretty sad when people have to attack Thanksgiving. I mean, that is really mad.
Yep.
Or Christmas.
Yeah, or Christmas.
Gee.
And you know it's coming. You're absolutely right. Really not much else. I was going to mention the Memorial County agreement. It's great that our economic development team is partnering with them because as a region, we benefit from their successes and vice versa. So we're glad to help them and, you know, they're, they aren't able to afford the expertise that we have, so it's great that we can leverage ours and help the region. And then the Berlin Business Park, the east region was, overlay was approved. I don't know if it was mentioned in Monday or not, but that was certainly big news. And then the eastern overlay is scheduled for December's trustee meeting. So that's huge news as well for that corridor. So anyway, with that, we do have need for executive session, Jennifer.
Resolution number 20-1078. In the matter of adjourning into executive session for consideration of appointment of a public employer, a public official, and for confidential information related to economic development.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion 20-1078. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution number 20-1079, in the matter of adjourned out of executive session.
So moved.
Excellent.
Discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 20-1079, Mrs. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye. So do we adjourn, Jennifer, or do we...
We are adjourned.
Okay, and the budget hearings start today this afternoon at 1:30.